Alrighty, let's get this going so we can still beat the Methodist to lunch. That may be the most excited thing that happens here in the next little bit. I appreciate you all sticking around. We really wanted to provide this time for people that have questions to be able to ask them and yet, as we have been talking with many of you, sending messages back and forth this week, there are a number of things that were kind of general themes that we were getting asked and so we thought that it might make a little bit of sense to talk through some of kind of the finer points of what we're presenting to you and then we'll take some time for questions at the end. So what we really want to do is this, we want to talk really quickly about church structure, some changes in our constitution, some changes in our bylaws, and then I want to take just a little bit of time and explain to you how we landed at our budget numbers and then we'll take questions and we'll stand here and take questions until after the Methodist have made it to lunch, if that's how long it takes. So really the first thing, for the church structure, we just want to talk briefly about how the church will be structured. You should have had access to this, it's going to be a little hard to see in here. This is the organizational chart for the new church. Is this mic in your guys' way? I'll move it over here. No, it is not. That's a placeholder that we've used throughout the process, that's a good question. But granted, it's not question time yet. I'm just teasing. So really, there's not a ton of changes in terms of the way that the structure of the new church will work different than the way that one church works. So similarly to one church, the congregation sits at the top of that, underneath that is the executive team. The executive team, remember, is a team of people that are nominated by the church that exists to help with the day-to-day operations of the business, specifically our bylaws, say, of the corporation. So there are things, obviously, where church is a little different. It is kind of a business, a nonprofit business, and the business part of that is overseen here at One Church and at the new church by the executive team. Underneath the executive team is the lead pastor, that will be Dave, and then there are three pastors underneath Dave. The furthest one to the left is my name, my job, executive and worship pastor. So my role really kind of stays the same in the new church. In the middle is pastor of discipleship and care, that's Pastor Cale, and then pastor of missions and community, that's Keith. Now, let's talk about that just a little bit. Keith has been the worship pastor at Pleasant View. Keith does not want to be the worship pastor at Pleasant View anymore. He has done worship for a lot of years. If I'm communicating something wrong, you tell me. In fact, he told their church last week, "I am very glad to not be doing that anymore." As such, we really kind of sat down, Cale, Dave, myself, and Keith, and we started on a whiteboard, literally with every role within the church, every potential role up on a whiteboard, and we just started moving pieces around to try to figure out what's the best use of our individual skills and abilities, and we think this works. That said, I think probably of all of the jobs, there's some flux and wiggle room in that. Mona is down here. Oh, sorry, I should have said this. If you are from Pleasant View on the merge team, would you just stand up or wave really fast? This is Alex, Mona, and Susan. Mona has been super helpful in figuring these parts of it out. Mona is the chair of the personnel team at Pleasant View, and so she's been really involved in that. As we've worked through that specifically with that third pastor spot, there's just flux into it as we're trying to figure out exactly what's the right mixture of things. And some of that honestly will be kind of decided along the way by Keith, right? So we want to give Keith the ability to kind of speak into exactly what are the different things that he's really passionate about. And you can imagine after doing one thing for 20, right, Susan, 20 years? Keith's been a worship leader? Yeah, you can imagine after doing one thing for 20 years and then trying to figure out what else you want to do, it may take a little bit of time in that. Does that make sense? Not if you say yes. Okay, good, great. You guys are looking at me like I'm Dave. Oh, what'd you say? Not the time for questions? I hear ya. There's some, then people, if you go back to the left side, Joanne, who's our bookkeeper, their office manager, Kirsten. We have a production assistant, Max, who plays guitar up here, helps us with some production during the week. They kind of slot in underneath me. Underneath Cale then is children's ministry and student ministry, so Caitlin and Alex, and then children's assistants. And then the facilities of the other side, so that Pleasant View building, you guys were there a couple weeks ago, you know it is massive, and there's a lot of responsibility just tied up in making sure that that building is functioning properly. I forget what Keith told me. Twenty, how many AC units are in the building? Twenty-seven or something? I mean, it was like, when he told me, I was like, "Well, that's his job, I don't know." But when he told me that, I thought, "There's a lot of work just trying to keep all of those things running." So he will continue to handle the facilities of that building and then oversee what we do as it relates to missions. Now, just similarly to what we have here, I should have done this, sorry. I made it a little bigger, but I'll go ahead to the next side. Oh, I'm gonna go back and highlight one thing. You may notice that there's kind of a dotted line drawn between the executive team and my name. And just to remind you, Dave and I are brothers, and so if there's a situation that's a personnel situation that needs to be addressed between the executive team and me, we have really taken Dave out of that to avoid the conflict of interest. So in a sense, Dave is certainly, well, not in a sense, he is my direct report on a day-to-day basis. But if there were a situation where there needed to be corrective action taken, we don't want Dave to have to do that. He doesn't want to have to do that, I don't want him to have to do that. And so the executive team steps in and is the direct report essentially for me anytime there would be something that needs to be corrected. Does that make sense with everybody? Yes? Then the academy. Remember that the academy exists as an entity within, as a ministry of the church. Now, it feels different because we're not talking about all of the different ministries, right? So we're not, we don't have a thing in the org chart for entrusted or for discipleship groups. I think we can all agree, the academy is a different beast altogether. And so it sits this way, the academy sits here with the school board and the lead pastor. So in our documentation, Dave is on the school board, right? So, and remember that the school board, once those bylaws are adopted, and as they are now, the school board cannot change the bylaws without the church voting to allow them to do that, right? They can move and operate, but the church has to be okay with what they're asking to do. And so we make this a little less murky by putting Dave on the school board for just that reason. And then the executive director is under that spot. We think we have that person identified, and I would love to tell you who it is, but I can't yet. But we're pretty excited about that. And then of course, Dave has talked to you, kind of moving forward. We have the full-time side on the left, the pathway director, LaShelle King is that pathway director who's already been here. And then with the advent of the leap side, which has happened here recently, a part-time director, teachers, paraprofessionals, volunteers, and then students and families, okay? So all of those things fit within this basic chart. Now, here's the thing, Dave, we fought about it. Dave hates org charts, just here to tell you. If you know Dave, you know Dave is like super creative, right? This is just who he is, it's how God's wired him, and he doesn't want to have to fit in a thing. And he was like, "As soon as we do that, everyone's gonna get all upset about it and blah, 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 blah." And sure enough, as soon as we did it, everybody got upset about it. And then it was, we had to kind of go back and figure out some stuff, not upset, but it... Dave is such a collaborative, how many times, Cale, have we been sitting in a meeting where he says, "Collaborative, collaborative"? I mean, it's like, not that we would ever do a drinking alcohol game, but if we had a drink of water game, every time he said collaborative, we would have to go to the bathroom a lot, okay? We'll come back, and I'm gonna try to get through this part of it and then we'll come back and you can ask questions about anything that you want to. I want to highlight some constitution changes. So these are things that have been changed in the document that you got that are different from what our current constitution says. Obviously, the first one is the name, One Church to Pleasant View Baptist Church. And I want to explain some things about that really quickly. There was some discussion early on about whether or not we were going to, we knew when we merged, we were gonna have to dissolve one or the other entities. And we were sitting in meetings trying to figure that out, and I'll tell you ultimately how the decision got made. And I would love to tell you that it was like a really deep theological decision, but it was not. When we were sitting, looking at the way that each of the churches do benefits, the health insurance plan that is Pleasant View's plan is a grandfathered-in plan that you cannot get anymore, that is significantly less expensive than what the church is currently paying for our health insurance, but it is tied to the EIN number of Pleasant View. And so if we changed that, we were going to lose that access. It was better insurance for your staff and cheaper. And it was like, I guess that's what we're gonna do. And everyone looked around the table and was like, "Yeah, I guess that is what we're gonna do." It really was an easy thing. And so because of that, the legal name of the new church will be Pleasant View Baptist Church, it's already established. Now, we could rename it, there's really not a whole lot of reason to do it, it's already existing. It is way less time-intensive and expensive to just file a DBA, which is Doing Business As, and then figure out what we're gonna call ourselves, and then that's what we'll call ourselves. That may seem kind of crazy to you. I worked for eight years at a church in Northern California that everybody called South Winds. It was the name that was on our sign, it was the name that was on all of our letterhead. However, when I got my paycheck, it said Trinity Baptist Church because South Winds was a DBA for Trinity Baptist Church. Nobody except for, I don't know, maybe 5% of the church even knew that the legal name of the entity was Trinity Baptist Church. Everybody called it South Winds. And so that legal name exists separate, I mean, it exists as a thing, but it really will not be necessarily what we call ourselves. We have not gotten far enough into a name situation yet where we know what we're gonna call ourselves. But that's kind of why. Obviously, the primary location right now on our paperwork, primary location, List 201 North Derby, that will no longer be the case, we'll move to 1335 Buckner. The plan as it stands right now, however, is to keep this building and use it as the academy building. So we would, the church would meet at the other location and we would retain this building for the school, which, let me just tell you, and I don't want to get into this because this isn't a school meeting, there's a ton of movement happening with the school right now. And I think the school is going to blow up here before too much longer. So a thing, per Dave's message, that we should be praying about and then be ready to grab a hammer. The other, one of the other things that we've changed in our current constitution, One Church's current constitution, we have a statement of faith, and it was kind of listed out. We have shortened that basically to say that we stand in line with the Baptist Faith and Message. Now, you may not know what that is. The Baptist Faith and Message is a document that the Southern Baptist Convention puts out that's basically an all-encompassing theological statement of beliefs. And FYI, we are a Southern Baptist church. There was nothing in our existing statement of faith that was any different than the Baptist Faith and Message, and so we basically just co-opted that entire thing. In fact, in the document, as it will ultimately stand once we vote on it, we didn't do this to save on money, I don't believe. We actually have an appendix in the constitution that is the Baptist Faith and Message. We were just trying to save money because there was a lot of printing to print all of that out. There's nothing outside the realm of standard Christian orthodoxy, anything that we would believe that is any different. The last thing that is a change is, if you remember back to when you were reading so intently these last couple weeks, Pleasant View had a church covenant that we really liked in their existing documents that we brought over into this new document. And part of the reason is that, as I've thought about it, Cale and I talked about it a lot in the office, when people join the church, we would like them to have a really clear idea of what it is that they're agreeing to, and we thought that the Pleasant View covenant was really good, and so we left it in there. Bylaw changes, okay? There's a couple of things that change in the bylaws in the version that you have. The first one is the executive team setup. The way that One Church, Aviator First, and One Church has operated or tried to operate, we haven't always been so good at it because we keep hiring exec team members, is that our goal was always to have an equal number of staff people on the executive team and non-staff people. Now, when we first started, you may recall, even when we instituted that, after we did interviews, we thought that the people on the non-staff side, we didn't want to leave any of those people off. So when we first constituted that team, it was three staff members and four non-staff members. We have pretty consistently been heavy on the other side until we started hiring people. So we hired Amanda, we hired Cale, all of a sudden we were then staff-heavy, not non-staff-heavy. Does that make sense? And so when we were processing this through with Pleasant View, Pleasant View has been a church that has historically done more of a church committee structure, and we didn't think that that was the best way. The word that we've used here when we've been describing that is that we want the church to be able to be nimble in its decision-making, and so we wanted that. They, as we kind of negotiated through what that could look like, what we ended up landing on was that we all felt really confident that we never wanted the staff side to be heavier in terms of exec team than the non-staff side, right? So we have said really clearly, back to the org chart, that the church sits, the congregation sits at the top. And so if the congregation really does sit at the top, then the representatives from the congregation really should probably outnumber the staff people on the executive team. Makes sense? And so what we're going to do, what we're going to propose is that when the, if the merge happens, the new executive team will be made up of four laypeople from One Church, so four members of the congregation, volunteers from One Church, four from Pleasant View, and the four pastors. So that would be Cale, Keith, Dave, and myself. And then the four people that that team will be of One Church people would be Jim Tuller and Adri, who are currently on the team. You may recall, we just did interviews in the fall, and because we were, we knew this was coming, we kind of pushed pause on these, on moving forward because we weren't sure exactly what the setup was gonna look like. You guys correct if I'm saying something wrong. We weren't sure exactly what the setup was, and so we pushed pause on it. And once we knew what the setup was, then we knew we needed to add some other people. So these, Paul Peterson and Danielle Napier were both names that were turned in, were vetted by the team. And when we vote to merge, we will basically be voting to put them on the executive team, okay? Bylaw changes, the rest of them. Executive team limitations, on the second page of the bylaws, I'm sure you probably don't have them in front of you, but if you did, we actually tried to, we had the executive team limitations in a paragraph, and we pulled those out of a paragraph and listed them. I'll just remind you what they are. The executive team must provide, I'm sorry, the executive team cannot by themselves do these things. Approve a budget, hire and termination of the lead pastor, purchase, lease, or sale of property, any capital expenditure consisting of more than 3% over the stated budget. That's a change because remember, when we first started the executive team, the budget at One Church, or Aviator at the time, was really small. So if we had an air conditioning unit go out, we needed the ability to fix it. So at that point, the executive team had the ability to adjust spending up to 10% of the budget. But in a million-dollar budget, 10%, $100,000, that seemed full-on insanity, we couldn't do that. So we've changed that to 3%. Amendment of the constitution or bylaws, merger or dissolution of the church, yearly confirmation of the executive team, any amendments to the Learning Academy bylaws, addition of new deacons, and church membership. All of those things must be voted on by the church. So the executive team cannot go rogue and do any one of those things. So if all of a sudden the executive team got a wild hair and decided that they wanted to amend the constitution or bylaws without coming to the church, can't do that. Does that make sense? And so we wanted to just make that a little more clear. Another thing that we changed in the bylaws was a cutout for kids that are involved in the student ministry that want to be able to vote on a thing. We've made a provision there such that they can meet with the pastor to show that they understand what's going on and then can vote. That is not a thing that we just give out to them, that's a thing that they must show they have a command of. And then we've kind of codified the calendar. We will vote on people, right, for executive team and deacons in December, and school board, and we'll vote on budgets in June. And part of that is that we don't want to be doing all of those things at the same time, and this forces us to have two different, at least two different meetings a year where we have a chance to kind of report on what's going on. Now the budget, potential budget, how did we get here? This was a really, really, really highfalutin thing that we tried to do. We took the Pleasant View budget at $596,000 for '24-'25, and at this point it was November, and so we took the One Church giving that was year-to-date in November. We annualized it, we came up at $587,000. And so we added those two numbers together, and that's kind of how we came up with our target. What's wrong? That's what I meant, that's what I meant. That's what I meant. You can't stand in front of people with a microphone and not say something dumb, and if that's the worst that happens, I'm hitting it out of the park. And so we came up with that number, $1,083,000. Now, I asked, we were sitting in a meeting, I wish Sherri was here. I think Mona, you were in that meeting too. I asked in a meeting, was the '24-'25 Pleasant View budget, was it too much, was it, I'm trying to remember the exact wording I used, was it inappropriate or was it too ambitious? And Sherri, who is their finance chairman, said, "No, I don't think it was." Now, they're behind it right now, full disclosure. Part of that happens when you don't have a pastor, right? And so they've gone through some change, they're behind it. But we'll talk about that here in a second. So the potential budget, okay, reminder, right? If you've been here very long, you've heard me give this speech every time we talk about budgets. A church budget is not real dollars. Everybody say "not"? Real dollars. It's not real dollars, it's a plan. It's a plan for how the church would like to structure and fund ministry for the following year. Does that make sense? So the budget, just because there's, because the budget says we put money in there to do a thing, doesn't mean we do a thing. If there's not cash, we don't do the thing. Does that make sense? So that budget total, personnel is a huge chunk of that, $557,000. Missions giving, however, this is pretty cool, $136,000 in missions giving, that's dope. Here's a basic breakdown of how that works. You can tell personnel is the biggest chunk of it. Churches are typically trying to be between 45% and 55% on personnel. We are, if we spent every dime in our personnel allocation, we're at 51%, 51.4%. Now I'm gonna talk about that specifically. We built some discretionary funds into that personnel line item. We put some money in for staff education. We put some money in for subsidies for staff members if their kids want to go to the school. We put some money in for bonuses if it's, if we have cash in hand to do it. If we take the discretionary spending out of the personnel line, we are at 49.5% of our budget on personnel, which is pretty good. We have 6.2%, the purple at the top, in insurance. This was a change, if you were looking really close at the existing budget, and I'll tell you why it was a change. When we got into it, we realized Pleasant View's deductible on their building was 2% of the insured value, which is about $6 million. So if a storm comes through and blows a roof off, we didn't want to have to come up with $120,000 cash, right, like that. And so we're gonna spend a little bit more in the, on the policy so that we can get that deductible down. Missions giving is 12.6. Now here's a thing, figuring this is really tricky, right? This is a thing that Pleasant View's been dealing with for a lot of years. This is gonna be new for One Church because they give historically 10% of their, of what they bring in in receipts to the cooperative program, which if you're not a Southern Baptist person, we understand that, the cooperative program is how Southern Baptist churches cooperate together to pay for, to fund the IMB, which is the International Mission Board, and NAM, the North American Mission Board, to help plant churches and pay for missionaries. All of these churches gather together to do that. They have given 10%. This is a number we would have liked to have gotten to way sooner, we just couldn't afford it. But when we started talking through it, we decided that we were going to hold to their missions giving numbers. And so you have to understand that because cooperative program giving is set at 10%, if more comes in, more goes out, if less comes in, less goes out. Does that make sense? So here is a great illustration that a budget is not real dollars, it's a plan. So we're planning to do that. Additionally, we are giving a percentage to Hoxpa, which is the local association here. I think we're giving 1% to Hoxpa, if memory serves me right. If more comes in, more goes out, if less comes in... Ah, you guys are so smart. The next one is debt retirement. There's two numbers that make up that 4.1%. One is the building payment on this building, if memory serves me right, I have it in my notebook, it's like $21,000 and some change. What we decided to do was add an extra $2,000 a month to that principal payment to pay the thing off faster. So what we have to spend on that is $21,000 and some change. What we want to spend is 40, that'd be what, $45,000 and some change. Church administration, all of the things that it costs just to do church. We gotta pay for paper and copiers and computers and utilities and desks and all of this stuff. What'd you say? And HVAC units, like the 87 of them at the other building. Now, I will say this, we have 7.5% in ministries. Now, here's the deal, you might look at that and go, "Only 7.5% in ministry?" However, separating out the administration part of that from the ministry part of that is a really hard thing to do. So when Caitlin wants to run a new, when she changes her theme over for the month and she does a bunch of printing, we don't ping that out of children's ministry, we pay for it out of administrative costs. Does that make sense? And so that administrative cost in a lot of ways is also ministry spending as well. It's just that we, for our, for my mind, I split ministry spending as in like, children's ministry money, student ministry money, worship ministry money, and we split that out that way, okay? Now, here's the big question. I've gotten this question no less than 10 times this week. If we aren't making it, then what? Okay, so if we aren't making it, how do we cut costs? Near as I can tell, and again, you have to understand that this amount is going to constantly be in flux because of the missions percentages. Does that make sense? Because the less money that comes in, the less money that goes out on missions, the more money that comes in, the more money that goes out on missions. If we were to hit the number at $1,083,310 right on the nail, we've got about $846,000, $847,000 that's fixed money. That's money we're pretty confident we're gonna end up spending, at least this. We have about $236,000 in discretionary money. Those are, that's money that is, exists for ministries, money that exists, there's some in the personnel side, there's some in the administrative side, stuff that we could change, that we could fix. We want to present a budget that is a challenge, right? Because we want, we want to, if we're gonna do this, if we're gonna spend all of... Because we want, we want to, if we're going to do this, if we're going to spend all of the time and effort to do it, we want to hit the ground with our feet on the gas and let's go. But we also wanted to give ourselves a way that we can, we can, if we're not making it, we don't have to just spend. Does that make sense? And so we think we've given ourselves enough of a buffer in that. That is a lot of information, really, really fast. And I'm sure I have misspoken or said something screwy at one point or another. But I want to stop talking and get to questions. And so if you have questions on the constitution of bylaws, budget and structure, any other concerns, and, and understand, I may not have an answer for you. And if I don't, I'll find the answer and we'll get it. And we have some people here that might also know. Yep, Sue. Hold on, Kale's going to come to you for people that are joining us online.
I didn't really hear you.
Since when do you not want us to hear you? That's my question.
Okay. My question is on the budget.
Yep.
And the school. So is the school a totally separate budget? And especially with all the changes coming, is there anything of the school in the budget you just went through?
No, the goal is to make sure that this, is to do our best to get the school as a zero sum, right? We want the school to pay for itself. However, there is, because the church is covering the insurance and the utilities. What we would really like to do within the next three years, wasn't that what Dave said in staff meeting? We would like for the school to be covering the cost of the building insurance and the utilities. But we just don't think that that's realistic right away. Because we've been meeting in this building for church, it's kind of been a wash. But it will not, we will not be here for church. And so there's going to, there, yes, there is some cost. It's not set out as, we have, we've left like the personnel side. We really want the school to cover the cost of teachers and that. But there is some cost the church will be covering to pay for the school. Does that answer your question?
So if there's additional work that needs to be done to this building as more and more people come in, is that, is the school covering that or is the church covering that?
That is a great question. I think largely that will depend on the ability of Dave and the school board to raise money for the school. I would love to give you a firm answer. Kale, you ever thought on that?
Well, and I would just say too, when we, when we think about the school, the school is the church, right? It is a ministry of the church. And so it's not two separate entities. They're not their own entity that just meets in this place. They are a ministry of. And so in, in a lot of ways, we're accepting the responsibility for that ministry. But yes, the goal is eventually to get that completely self-sustained.
So I still am confused. Does that mean that out of the 550,000 we're spending on personnel, some of that is the school personnel?
It is not.
Okay.
It is not. So the personnel, what we spend in personnel for the school comes in through the fees for the school.
My question, that was my question. I had a question that Jack wanted me to ask since he's taking care of kiddos. He wanted to make sure that, are we going to use the same system for lining up volunteers because he wants to make sure that his life is not disrupted?
Yes, so Pleasant, whoa, man. That's a banger of a question. I'm here to tell you, yes, they, so Pleasant View uses Planning Center. We use Planning Center. Kale's already actually done some work to try to figure out how exactly are, do we merge these two planning centers into one planning center? It will be a little bit of a task, but that's, that is what we will do. Yep, go to Jody first and then Erin.
I have an executive team question. And I know what I want to say, so hopefully I can get it out. I read the document, the, the new document, but when you stated that the new executive team would be made up of four members from One Church and four congregation members from Pleasant View, I wonder if the wording is such that eventually it's eight members from the congregation? Because our goal is to be a unified body, right?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. It, it will be that eventually. It's really that four, four and four is just this initial seeding of the team. That's a great question. Because you're right, three years from now, if we're still thinking of it in terms of Pleasant View and One Church, we have failed miserably. Can we all agree to that? It won't work. And so, yes. And, and herein also, remember that that team in the document, it says up to 12, that team doesn't have to stay at 12. If, if within the team, we're looking at it and we're like, man, I mean, can we all agree that you've been in a situation where there's too many cooks in the kitchen? Sometimes there's just too many cooks in the kitchen and you got to get a cook or two out of there, right? And so if, if that's what we decide ultimately we need to do, really the key piece of that is that it must be weighted on the non-staff side, not the staff side. So that while, while I, we, we've had this discussion, how many times have we talked about this? Because like right now, like One Church, you guys know us, right? We're, we're all doing this together. We've been doing this together. We have a lot of trust built up. But the people that may come in after us, we want to set up a scenario that allows, again, allows the church to be nimble, but also it means that a rogue pastor can't go do damage to the body. Erin?
So you talked about the annual budget and broke that down into fixed and discretionary spending. What does it actually cost to do the merge? Are there specific one-time costs that it would take, whether it's legal fees, whether it's, you know, just the moving fees, moving, whether it's moving trucks or labor or things to get us over there? What are the, what's the one-time fees associated with the merge?
I'll be really honest, Erin, there are fees for that and some costs that's going to be involved in that. I haven't gotten that far down the road yet. I can tell you that we are already, so One Church has Shannon Holmberg, who's our attorney on retainer, and we've already begun the process of getting drafted the actual documents that we're going to have to have. And here's why. When, when we vote on this, per Kansas statutes, we have to send out a merge document that actually codifies everything that we're talking right now about into one document that actually has to be mailed out to you per the state of Kansas. So that, if, if we're, if we're cooking down the tracks and we're, we're on track, that will go out the last day of February so that we can get it into everybody's hands three weeks before we would possibly vote. There's cost involved with that. As far as moving stuff, the benefit of moving there, for those of you that were here when we moved to this building, the benefit of moving there over moving here is that they're already doing church there, right? So we've already been there for a week. We know we can get by while we figure out some of those details. My working assumption, and we haven't really even talked about this, we'll do some workdays. Part of that is going to be incumbent on all of the ministry leaders here to figure out staging and how we're going to move that stuff over. We also, we've talked about this, we don't really have to be out of this building entirely until probably July so that the school has access to the whole building and can start making a plan. And so, yes, there's cost to that. Yes, it, it would be shared by us all. I, I can't give you what that is right now.
Just looking at the budget, can you explain what Ministry Support Welch is and why it has gone away from, from the final budget? Is that like a missionary family?
Yep, that's exactly what it was.
And why are we not supporting them after the merge?
That's a family that we supported that came from our church and went out on the ministry field and due to medical stuff was unable, unable to be under IMB, the cooperative program. So we supported. They are currently off the mission field for a little bit, and so we took them off secondary spending.
Thank you. Fran?
I'm not sure this is really a merge question, but it is in the, in the bylaws. And I was kind of wondering, you know, in section two, paragraph A, you know, there's, there's some specific wording in there that we would not be involved with any political or taking stands against things that we're totally opposed to. And kind of wondering why, why that is there. It seems like it's very limiting to what we could do. That isn't our main purpose. And I see that it does say substantial, but it, but it also says, you know, I don't know if it's our main purpose, but I don't know that we want to be limited to not being able to do that.
So that's actually in the constitution, is it not? Constitution, Article Three, Section Two limitations? Yep, letter A. I'll tell you what, what, what he's asking about. No substantial part of the activities of the corporation will be the carrying on of propaganda or otherwise attempting to influence legislation. And the corporation will not participate in or intervene in, including the publication or distribution of statements of any political campaign on behalf of any candidate for public office. We've had a lot of discussions about that in the office. Kale, I'm going to let, I'm going to throw that to you and then I'll take that back.
Yeah, I mean, Larry, we've, we've looked at that quite a bit. I think that language, when you go back and look at that, and it is part of the 501(c)(3) IRS language, I don't know that we can get away from it. It does not in any way prohibit what Dave says from the pulpit. It doesn't keep him from preaching and teaching the Bible. It doesn't even really keep us from prohibiting like things like the, the value of them both amendment, right? It doesn't prohibit us from taking a stand on any moral and ethical issue. But what it's saying is just the substantial part of what we do as a church is not going to be a lobbying organization. And then specifically, we cannot, we cannot participate in endorsements of a candidate, right? You cannot endorse a particular candidate. You can do the voter guides and there's a lot of stuff that you can do that go alongside of that. But there's also, if you, the churches don't qualify for this, but there, there's a test for other nonprofits, not the, the 501(c)(3). I think we're under H, don't quote me on that. But we don't qualify for it, but the IRS has a test for what that is. And it is a substantial amount of your budget being, like, it's like 20% of your budget being pushed towards those kind of activities. Now again, we don't fall underneath that, but that's how they define substantial for other nonprofit organizations. So we've looked at it. We don't think it's going to prohibit in any way. It's, it hasn't prohibited in any way, and all the time Dave's been here as a pastor from, from preaching and teaching the truth. And I don't think it's going to prohibit it going forward. And then we've also talked about too, if it gets that, if it gets that bad where the IRS is coming in and telling us that we can't preach the truth, then we just give up the 501(c)(3). Now there's consequences for that too, but, so I don't know if you want to say some more?
Larry, does that answer your question?
Pretty much. But, you know, I think, you know, when it said we can't endorse a candidate, I mean, we can bring a candidate in and they can state their view as long as we offer equal time to opposing views. So, I mean, we're not limited to having someone come in that we support because of his views of where we are. We do have to offer equal time to the opposition. We can't just kind of take one side and, you know.
I don't read, do you read this as saying we cannot do that?
Well, yeah, I guess where I was, the main problem that I was seeing was that we introducing on behalf of candidate for public office, we wouldn't do any political intervene or try to convince, I guess, or, you know, a party, influence.
Larry, you, someone, yep, Mona?
I'm not a lawyer, but I do work with a lot of nonprofit organizations. That language is specific from IRS. It has to be within the legal documentation for any nonprofit organization. My understanding of that is such that new church could not say, we as a congregation support candidate X, Y, and Z for this role, this government office. However, if, if, think about it like this, if, let's say the city of Derby wanted to, I don't know, I'm going to go way back in history when we built Rock River Rapids. Or there's some big, big bond issue in town that maybe would be very complicated or that we're not sure if it would involve us. We could invite those candidates to come in and kind of explain that to us. We could, I mean, as individuals, obviously, we can choose to support that or not. We just can't openly campaign for candidates. We can't openly put our name next to, you know, supporters of, that can't, that person. So I don't know if that answers the question or not, but that's my understanding. Right, members of the, as a member of the congregation, you still have the right to support anything you want to support within our, our government. It just says that, that new church can't do that.
Larry, I, we, we will, this, this is not the first time we've gotten this question. We will spend some time this week just confirming that that language is indeed the way that that needs to be there. Kale and I will work on that together and just make sure, and I'll shoot you a message or Kale will shoot you a message and, and we'll, we'll speak to that.
Thank you, Merge Team, for all the work you've done. I think it's amazing, all the things that you guys have already ironed out. I have a few questions on the executive team and the replacement of the lead pastor. I was curious, I guess my instinct is that the executive team has a lot of responsibilities, especially the four non-staff members. Putting a search on top of that seems like an exceptional amount of work. We've been at One Church through this season of an exceptional amount of work for our executive team anyway, especially our volunteer staff. But if we're looking to replace a lead pastor, is there a reason why having a committee that is formed as a search committee that has representation from every group within the church? Because your executive team's not necessarily going to have a youth person, a child, you know, a, a good variety, depends on the committee, but it might not. So is there a reason why we're not looking at having a separate entity take on that specific large job?
Yes. That is a discussion we've had on the Pleasant View side. We, the, the executive team can do that. So the executive team can do that. The executive team doesn't have to run the search. The executive team must make sure that the search is run. Does that make sense? So the, so here's a great example. It, it, it's, it's an exact comparison. When it comes time to do staff evaluations, part of my job is to make sure that staff evaluations happen. But I don't actually evaluate Kale. Dave, as Kale's immediate report does, but I'm the one in Dave's ear going, hey, is this getting done? Is this getting done? Because we know Dave, right? And so really, I, I look at that, I look at the executive team. The executive team may decide, in this season, we actually can take this. Or they can go, eh, we can't do this. But when we are, when we're nominating people for the executive team, I think it's a thing that we ought to be thinking through. If Dave was to get hit by a bus, are these people that we trust to be able to do that? Or to make the decision that we need to bring more people in? There is no reason that the executive team is limited from doing that. It is their responsibility to make sure that the search happens.
That is how it happened last time when we got Dave. Two people from the executive team got a committee together and formed a team. And they made sure it happened. They didn't do it themselves, but they put together a committee of people. And that's how it happened the last time it was for a senior pastor.
Now, I, I would also argue, I think, so being, I have been on staff at churches where, where we were hiring somebody and I was part of the search. And I have been on staff at churches where I was not part of the search. I think there is wisdom in having your staff be part of the search because your staff are the people that do this all the time. And so like, I don't think anybody probably processes through some of the things that we're looking for in that, in that person, like people that already do this. And so I think if, if, as long as the executive team exists, and if we need to massage that wording, I'm happy to do it, as long as the executive team is the people that, that make sure the thing happens, I don't know that it's a huge issue to me either way. Mona? Yep. So what they're saying is we actually added the verbiage oversees the process to deal with this exact thing, which was an issue as we were talking through. Can you point me to where that is? I'm trying to find it, but trying to find it in front of somebody. Page nine. Oh, yep, 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 yep. Thank you. In the event that a new lead pastor must be selected, the executive team will be responsible to oversee both the search process and communicate to the body on the progress of the established process. So even that process... So even that process is not a thing that we, 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 we leave some, intentionally some ambiguity in here so that, that they can figure out what process they want to use and then the, the executive team makes sure that whoever is doing it is responsible to communicate it. Raina, you have any other questions?
Um, so the one year off, um, why one year?
Um, there are seasons of the executive team that are not particularly a lot. There are seasons of the executive team that are particularly a lot and we just think it's wise to, to provide a respite for people that don't do this full-time. We have discovered that usually by the time we get to that point, people are ready to roll off.
And I don't think I'm questioning rolling off because I do think that's really important. It's just that sometimes it's easy to go back to the easy selection instead of looking at the large group of talent that you have that might be available. So the one year, I guess, was the one thing I questioned.
Oh, 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 oh.
If there was a reason why we would just do one year and then let them back in or, you know, how that would go.
So, so bear in mind that if they rotate off, they have to go through the whole process to get back in. So, yes, it's not one year off and then you're automatically back in, just to be clear. It's, it's one year off and then they have to be nominated again and blah, blah, blah. And I, I, I ultimately agree with you. I think Tom, who's sitting right in front of you, would say, I'm ready, I'm ready to be off, I'm ready to be off the team. Dave keeps coming in and going, guys, guys, you gotta hear me out. I got an idea. Do we have to?
So that comes to the process. I, I think for me, um, coming from a more traditional background, the process is still very quiet and behind the scenes. And I would just like to say that I'd like it to be a little bit more out loud. So the nominations, so just hear me out.
No, no, I was gonna ask how, so that's right.
So the nominations are quiet. You might or might not know if somebody nominated you. And then you might know that you were nominated, but you weren't contacted. So I think just more of a public, this, this is the people who are nominated. And then in the, the, um, information, it says that you won't necessarily survey or question everyone who's nominated. I can understand that, but I think that puts a barrier up, um, because you might not know something about people's backgrounds or where their qualifications are, that I think everyone, why not allow everyone to be, have the questionnaire? Then you have the executive team that goes in and, and siphons through those and limits that down into the actual interview process. Again, you know, so the two names that were named today, I didn't even know they were up to be a part of the executive team. So I guess I just think it would be nice for me in my heart to be praying for that, to be knowing who these people are and be praying for them and be praying for the executive team as they're making these decisions. There's just still a lot of that that seems to be, I, I, I guess I personally don't know about and maybe that bothers just me, but I think it's helpful for me to be a part of the congregation and be joining you in prayer as you're making these decisions.
So I wanna make sure I'm understanding. Your, your thinking would be that if somebody was nominated, we should put together a list of everybody that was nominated and basically make that available publicly? Okay, that's fine. Great.
And if they're nominated, then they go to the next step, which is that questionnaire? Because if, I guess in my thinking, if someone thinks that I'm qualified, I should at least be able to have the questions asked and have the executive team truly explore who I am as a person to serve in that role.
I think my only question on that would be, if you're nominated and it comes to me and I, I've been nominated, but I'm an, I was an embezzler in the past. Okay, now all of a sudden, if I'm nominated, then I go into this list and the pastor and the executive team have to decide, they have to tell you why I was not approved. So it becomes a matter of, if I have something, and everybody's got something or other, but if, if I've got something that is causing me, you know, causing me grief or would cause you grief, then I would just assume, even though my name was put in as a nomination, I'd just assume they'd just kinda let me alone. Okay? You, you get what I'm, what I'm trying to say here? That, uh, not everybody who's nominated necessarily wants to be or has a reason why they should. If we can look at them and say, there are certain reasons why we don't wanna nominate, that's why we do background checks. And then I don't want to bring that person up as, you know, bring them up in front of the entire church and there is Debbie Longus sitting there.
I don't, I'm trying to, I'm sitting here trying to think through your suggestion, Raina. I don't, I don't know that I disagree with it. I will say, um, I think as the church gets bigger, it becomes a more cumbersome process. Which, fine, but I just think it will, by virtue of what it is, become a more cumbersome process. Uh, that's not a qualitative statement.
Would it be possible that, uh, that's to avoid politicking for said positions?
I don't, well, since I wrote it, no. Like, um, but, um, no, it never dawned on me that people would do that. I, I mean, call me naive, I, I guess.
So why, why is it worded that way? Why is it that only certain people, I mean, it's worded that only certain people receive the questionnaire that are gonna be considered? You know, I, to me, there, there's a filter there and I'm not sure what, why the filter's there, I guess.
Um, I don't know that I thought through it that deeply, uh, in, in full disclosure. I don't know that I did. I got, this is the first time, Kale, I don't remember having this conversation before. Normally, we, we have tried to talk through everything. I didn't have this one on my list. Yeah, I agree. Emma? Yeah, I, I, I don't know that I think there's one way to do it. Yep, Tom?
Just speaking on this, um, I was asked, I've, I've been a deacon at a, a previous church and I was nominated. Kale came to me and spoke to me about it and was like, you know, with everything that's going on personally in my life and being on the executive team for the first period, I was like, no, I really would not like. Well, if Kale would've put it out there for everybody, I'd have had thirty people come up, say, hey, how come you're not being a deacon? Um, one thing that I am very proud of, our executive team, our staff, they've got God's heart. They're coming together saying, how do we pick the person? Do we look at the person to, that's gonna best fit and do God's word and God's will? It's not a political thing, it never has been. It's an awesome, I wish everybody could be on the executive team. It's awesome to see this group work. They've got a true passion for God's heart and they do. I, every person that was brought up on anything has, has a conversation. And then through that, it basically vets out that and then we're given that list of, okay, these are the people that really wanna do it. So, but I would just tell everybody, it's an awesome group we've got and I don't see it ever changing. We've got bylaws in place to prevent issues from happening. This is a good question.
Raina, I'll, I'll finish with, with this. I think that's a fair question and I think it's something that we will do some digging on. Are you good with that?
Yeah. So I have another question.
Fire away.
So when you talked about, um, the qualifications and job, job description is only listed on the non-pastoral staff. And so I was just curious in that, when you're looking at hiring and going into non-pastoral positions, then you're looking at job descriptions and specific things, but as we're looking at pastoral pos- positions, I was just curious if there's a reason why job description and qualif- qualification was not stated?
On what? I'm sorry. Uh, like for jobs in general or on the executive team?
It was, it was, no, on the jobs, on paid staff. Sorry, I summarized my notes and I didn't write down the page.
No, no, you're fine. I wanna make sure I'm understanding what you're asking.
I think it's section three on, I believe, pastoral staff.
Section? Raina, I'm sorry.
So, um, I'm on page twelve, so we have church staff and then you have listed A, B, C, and D. D says, "Non-pastoral staff members may be employed and terminated by procedures in the personnel manual upon recommendation of the lead pastor." Oops, sorry, wrong section. I've read the whole part, but I just want to make sure.
I do not understand that either, sorry.
Well, I can scan and tell you later, but I just noticed those terms descrip-, you know, qualifications and job description were not used very frequently. They were not, they were only used in non-staff members.
Non-staff?
Or non-pastoral, sorry.
Okay, so there, so there, so I, uh, I, because I don't know the full context of your question, I'm kinda guessing. However, I will say this, we are working on job descriptions for the pastors. Is that what you're getting at, is you want to see job descriptions?
I would like to have, yes.
Okay, great, so just, just say what you want.
Qualifications and job descriptions included on everyone who's employed.
That's fine.
Not just non-staff, non-pastoral.
So we, we, we have job descriptions that we had put together and Mona and I have spent a lot of time dealing with this. Mona is the head of HR at a, one of the big companies, one of the big aerospace companies here. We, we did a bunch of work on job descriptions, um, and the, the problem we were having, so the qualifications, right? So for pastor, those qualifications are biblical qualifications. So, um, what are the biblical qualifications for that? But as far as the specific responsibilities, there are some of us that we really know what those are pretty, pretty codified right now. Um, mine, my job is basically the same job I have now, just doing it for the new church. As we're trying to figure out keys, we were trying to figure out what exactly are the things. And so we have some job descriptions. We didn't put them out to everybody because we just weren't sure they were ready. Um, and, um, when I met with Mona, golly, we met Tuesday night this week to talk about job descriptions, Wednesday? Um, because we anticipated that this would be a question, um, we just felt like we need a little bit of time to put some meat on the bone. I know that probably is a little ambiguous for you. Mona suggested, uh, Mona, if I'm speaking for you inappropriately, you, you can correct me, that when you're dealing with a merger and acquisition and they've done, they do that, she has done that, that typically those job descriptions are in flux for a little while, while you're figuring out exactly where everybody is gonna situate. So we will do job descriptions. I would point out to you, though, that one of the things that we have added, and it's in the personnel policy, is a review process that's a little more structured in, including the, when the appendices in the back of it, that line out exactly how that's going to run. So while I think the job descriptions are important, I would probably meet your question with the answer of, I think the job descrip- or job descriptions are important-ish. I think review process is probably more important because I don't know exactly today what the church looks like a year from now, fifteen months from now, twenty-four months from now.
Definitely a working document. Job description is a working document. You're looking at strengths and weaknesses of who you employ, what your holes are, how to employ those. I, I totally agree. So I'm looking at page ten, staff pastors. The lead pastor with the aid and the guidance of the executive team will have the responsibility of recommending staff pastors slash pastoral staff for employment. I would just like to see in there that they have qualifications and job description in there as well.
Done.
So just within the, the document is what I'm thinking, is that we wanna have that covered so that it's not just...
Are you taking notes?
Another brother that might show up from St. Louis or something.
Oh my gosh, I can think of nothing funnier than Dave being Mike's boss. Just let me tell you. Sign me up for all of that. I would need to buy stock in a popcorn company because I would just show up to work, make some popcorn, sit back and watch the show. We could sell tickets. This is how we make the budget.
So in, um, in this section on the financial assistance, when you're looking at the interim pastor, my, I just had a question if, as you have someone that's a non-voting executive staff, page twelve, section five, sorry, I read it all, I don't...
That's good, sorry.
Those other people have questions too, I'll shut up and ask. Um, I was just curious if the, the section five, the, uh, staff person that does not have to be a member of the church and is not a voting member of the executive team, do they attend meetings? I mean, I just wondered how much we're expecting the lead pastor to help actually, or the interim pastor to actually lead? Or it's mainly the executive team? I lost on one of the things.
So, eh, so in executive team meetings, does the financial assistant come to those meetings? Is that what you're asking?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, that was two different sections. Yes, I was wondering about the financial assistance availability to attend meetings?
Okay.
And then with, if you have an interim pastor, do they attend meetings?
Um, the interim pastor would not be a voting member. Uh, right now, Dave doesn't run those exec team meetings, I do, um, as the executive pastor. We typically have Joanne there if she's available when we start with finances. Finances are the first thing that we talk through. Um, I would imagine that we would, I can, I can foresee no scenario in which we would not want or need her there moving forward. But that doesn't...
Whoever's in that role.
Yeah, yeah, a hundred percent.
Even when they're outsourced, that, I guess that was part of what I was thinking.
Yeah, I, maybe. I think, so if, that's a great question, if it's outsourced, because Pleasant View does outsource that. Um, I would think probably, and I'm just spitballing here, my working assumption is that if we were going to be at Pleasant View and, and if we were outsourcing that, we would probably pick somebody on the team to work with me, like a non-staff to work with me, just to, to oversee the financial part of it and then we would report on that. Would be my guess, but I, we don't have a, a mandated way of handling that.
This is a little bit of an extension to that. I noticed on the org chart, there's bookkeeper. You said financial assistant. My experience with other churches, even small ones, is there's a church treasurer or like a financial manager. Bookkeeper sounds like somebody who just puts numbers in a spreadsheet or something. I feel like, especially with the million dollar budget, that's a much bigger job, should have more, I don't know what the job description is, basically.
So I think I would meet that and say that is the response, that is part and parcel the responsibility of the executive team. So the, rather, I, I don't think that we should have a person doing that. I think we should have people who are watching what's coming in and coming out on the red, not a person. So I think, um, whether that, like for right now, right for us, that's Joanne and she does a great job of that. Um, I think Joanne, I got an email from Joanne this week. Joanne has met with Kirsten over there and trying to figure out exactly what that looks like. We will have multiple people involved in that. Furthermore, ro- as a, just a reminder, anybody that wants access to what we're spending here can get that as read-only access. So we don't, we try to be out there in front of all of those things. But it, but again, I think part, part of that goes back to, do we, the, the, in using an executive team, we have basically taken the responsibility of the personnel team and the finance team and put them in one. And so that responsibility that I think historically would be covered by, the finance, the finance team is covered by the executive team here. Well, this is awkward. Dave, I got questions back here. Taylor and Dave? Shut up. Maybe we need to bring Mike in to be Dave's boss.
So my question is, um, on the executive team, it, you said in three years. Is the whole team getting replaced in three years or are you gonna do like a three, three, and three thing?
Yep. So, um, our plan as we structure it now is all of the, the eight non-staffers that come on, we'll do them in, one person on a one-year term, two-year, three-year, four-year.
for custodial here and lower price over there, but we're going to a bigger building. How's that compute?
Yep. Give me a second to get there. I have the answer to this. Yep, I'll let you get it.
I only know this because I helped do it. So the thought process is, the needs for janitorial services in this building will actually reduce because the school has some responsibility for making sure those custodial activities happen. So we won't need to pay somebody quite as much. Also, at Pleasant View, we recently signed a contract with a building services company that is gonna come in and do that, and it's actually cheaper than what we were paying somebody. Does that answer the question?
Yo. Emma, why would we pay to do it when you have so graciously volunteered to do it? We did not build anything into that because that's not custodial than what we've done here. We're happy to have that discussion, though. Now, I will say this, when we, when we had that ice storm a couple weeks ago, Mark Love came and shoveled it for us and has told me that he's, you know, happy to do it at least once, so hopefully I can twist his arm a little bit. Yes, what'd you say? Yeah, citywide, we'll do some of that as well.
No, we... Are we sticking with one service, and if so, what time?
Oh, let's get down to the nitty-gritty, I guess, huh? I would imagine we will start with one service, my working assumption, although I don't think we have had one conversation about this, would be that we would go to 10:30 maybe? That would be my guess. But I will tell you this, a couple weeks ago, when we were there, it was pretty full. It was like, oh man, there's a lot of people here. So I don't know the answer to that. I, I think needing to go to two services would be a great problem to have, but I think we'll have to see kinda where things land. That would be my caution. But if somebody else has a better answer, I'm all ears. Going twice? Sold. All right, it's nap time. Okay, so, thank you. Thank you. This has been really helpful. Every time that we get good questions, it helps us because what we want to present ultimately that we vote on is the best version of everything that we can possibly get to, and I don't think I can do that, or Kale can do that, or Dave can, certainly not Dave, can do it, sitting in an office. I think it happens the best with all of us. Amen? Okay, can I pray for us? And hurry to lunch. God, we, our desire in, in this whole process is to follow your spirit, and God, that a super healthy, effective church that really reaches out in the service of your gospel is thriving here. And so, God, we ask that you would help us to accomplish that, and God, if, if we're running into a problem that we need to not do, we ask that you would make it abundantly clear. God, I also ask that you would give us courage as we face what seems a little uncertain moving forward. We love you, and we thank you for the cross and the price you paid for our sin. You're good. It's in your name we pray. Amen. Love you all, we'll see you next week.